Welcome to our presentation of College Park Power 101. I think our power department and our customer service surrounding power and our other utilities is one of the most important, but one of the most complex things that we do as a city. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley-Broom. I'm joined by Councilmember Ambrose Clay from Ward 1. And we're going to sit back a little bit and let our experts tell you a little bit about how College Park Power works. So tonight, we have a number of guests. We're actually joined by several people from the Municipal Electric Authority of Georgia, or MEAG. You'll learn more about MEAG during this presentation. We're joined by Jim Fuller, the President and Chief Executive Officer of MEAG. And we're also joined by Pete Degnan Sr., I'm sorry, excuse me, Pete Degnan, the Senior Vice President and General Counsel of MEAG as well. But our presenters tonight will be the Director of College Park Power, Hugh Richardson, Stuart Jones, the Senior Regional Manager of MEAG Power, who's also a College Park resident, and our Director of Finance and Accounting and Customer Service, Althea Felord Bradley. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over so you can learn more. If you have questions for us, you can send them in the box on Facebook. If you are online with us, you can send them in the chat box. Or at the conclusion, you can actually raise your hand and ask questions as well. But we want this to be an interactive program. We ask that we hold those questions till the end, but we definitely want to have that dialogue and continue it even beyond tonight. So thank you for coming, and I hope that you get a lot out of this presentation. Mr. Richardson, the floor is yours.
Okay, I want to kick this off by talking about that we have 94 power companies in Georgia. Throughout my career, I've heard people say, "We only have one," or "We have several that are related," and we are in a way, but actually, there are 94 independent power companies in Georgia. And this slide shows the grouping of those companies based on their power supplier. First, of course, MEAG Power, who provides power to 49 participants, 48 cities and one county. We'll get more about them pretty soon. Oath Power provides power to 38 electric corporatives or later membership corporations. The Tennessee Valley Authority provides power to three electric co-ops in one city. These are all located in North Georgia, and some actually serve into the state of Tennessee. One city has a power purchase agreement with an electric co-op. And of course, there's Georgia Power, which is statewide coverage in the city of Dalton, which is one independent city that has some co-ownership in the generating plants in the state. So they're all 94 that serve the state of Georgia. A couple of footnotes, the coverage area is based on the Electric Service Territorial Act of 1970. So it's not necessarily city limits, and the Service Territorial Act could be a presentation of its own, but we won't cover that anymore tonight. And another footnote, the cities and the EMCs are not directly governed or regulated by the Georgia Public Center with the exception of territory. And the cities are regulated and governed by elected mayor and council, and the EMCs are regulated by elected board of directors. But tonight, we're here to hear about MEAG Power. So Stuart Jones is going to do that for us, and Stuart is our Senior Regional Manager. So Stuart, take it away.
Thank you, Hugh, and thank you, Mayor. This opportunity to talk a little bit about MEAG Power. We'll get started. Next slide, please. In the early 1970s, Georgia Power Company notified its wholesale customers that in the event of a system emergency, they would no longer be able to supply a stable source of electric power. And notified them also that in the event of that to occur, they would be curtailing service to their wholesale power customers. Those wholesale power customers were made up of the 49 municipal systems that Hugh mentioned earlier, plus the 38 EMCs across the state. At the same time that they let this notice go out, they were, Georgia Power Company is also seeking an operating license for Hatch Nuclear Unit Number Two and construction licenses for Vogel Units Number One and Two. At that same time, the Atomic Energy Act was being amended to require anti-tuss review by the Department of Justice. After that review was done, Georgia Power agreed to sell to the municipals and the EMCs shares of their generating facilities, and that's how MEAG Power came to be co-owners on your all's behalf in the generating facilities and eventually the integrated transmission system. Next slide, please. As a result of all that, the General Assembly, Georgia General Assembly, created MEAG in 1975, and the sole purpose for MEAG is to acquire the generation and transmission facilities to provide power to, at that time, the 47 municipals that actually made up MEAG. The picture you're seeing on the slide is of the first MEAG Power Board, and I will point out to you that there's a representative from the city of College Park, Mr. Althea Stakely, who's just coincidentally holding the check for the first issuance of bond sales for the generating facilities that they bought into. And we're fortunate today in that we still have a surviving member of that board, Mr. Frank Olson, who is second from the right, that we'll have some comments from him shortly as well. All right, the next slide, please. Okay. This is the MEAG Power timeline. I'm not going to touch on every one of these dates, but let me just pick out a select few. First off, 1975, as stated earlier, MEAG was formed by an act of the Georgia General Assembly. 1997 was when we first met. We had 47 participants to form MEAG Power at that time. 1986, the city of Oxford joined as the 48th participant. Up to that point, they'd been a wholesale customer to the city of Covington. 97, the Energy Authority is formed, and the reason that I point that out is, the Energy Authority is the wholesale trading floor where, when we have excess power to sell or if we have power that we need to buy, we operate through them to have access to the wholesale trading floor or to the wholesale trading market. The next one I'll point out, I'll jump down to 2002. The city of Acworth decided to come onboard at that point as our 49th participant. So that's how we got from 47 in 1977 to 49 in 2002. The last of the bullets that I will point out is 2008, the MEAG Transmission Training Center. Our linemen are expected to be qualified and trained, just like anybody else's lineman, whether it's Georgia Power Company or Greystone EMC that I know flanks College Park. And this is one of the locations that we provide training for our linemen that allow them to work out on the transmission system, on the higher voltage equipment. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the state, obviously, that shows the location of our 49 participants. Hugh did mention earlier that it's 48 municipals and one county, the county being Chris County, which is located in Cordial, Georgia. The last thing on this slide that I will point out, we'll just reiterate the designated territories. 1973, the Electric Territories Service Act was enacted, and that establishes the areas that our cities, and co-ops for that matter, and Georgia Power, has captive load areas for any customers that come into those areas. There's a caveat or two that comes into play in that, but for all tenants and residents, any customer that comes into those designated areas will be served by the incumbent utility. Next slide, please. All righty. This slide indicates the area of responsibility between MEAG Power and our participants. The red dotted line that bisects the slide is the dividing line. I'll start on the left-hand side with our generating facilities. We co-own now eight generating facilities or units across the state. From that, we transmit the power over the integrated transmission system through the transmission substations, ultimately ending in the distribution substations for each of our 49, and we do that as far as College Park goes. To the right-hand side of that red dotted line, College Park Power takes the mantle, if you will, and delivers the electric energy to the commercial, industrial, and residential customers that College Park Power serves. Next slide. Just a picture of just a small part of the ITS, or the Integrated Transmission System. We operate that system at the 500,000 level, 230,000 level, and 115,000 level. This is actually a shot of a 230,000-volt section out across the state. The four bullets that are there, let me direct your attention to the fourth one. The, Georgia is unique in that, I mentioned earlier, the captive area for the electric providers. However, if a customer comes into the state that's outside of those captive areas that has a larger than a 900 KW load, which is like a big box Home Depot, then they have a choice one time of their electric provider. Having access to the ITS allows our 49 participants to bid on serving those larger loads, and we've been quite successful throughout the years. Well, our participants, excuse me, let me rephrase that. The participants have been quite successful throughout the years winning those loads. Next slide, please. Again, a picture of the state and the location of the site of our generating facilities. Plant Wansley, Plant Shear, Plant Vogel, and Plant Hatch. You can see where they're located. The green circles are the locations of the Southeastern Power Administration hydro dams. So that is the source of the hydro power that our participants are part and parcel to. We also refer to that as SEPA, so the Southeastern Power Administration. It is located in Elberton, Georgia. Next slide. This is a slide that shows both of the coal generating facilities. The upper left-hand slide is of Plant Shear, located, it's actually in Julia, Georgia, but it's east of Forsyth, north of Macon. We co-own 501 megawatts of capacity in two of the units that are there, and it's operated by Georgia Power. The right-hand slide is of the Wansley Coal Generating Station located in Franklin, Georgia. We co-own 259 megawatts of capacity there, and it is operated also by Georgia Power Company. Next slide, thank you very much. These are slides showing both of the nuclear generating facilities that we co-own. On the left-hand side, it is Plant Vogel, the two existing operating units, and this, of course, is also the site of the expansion that I'm sure you all have heard about Vogel Units Three and Four. At present, we co-own 523 megawatts, and it is operated by Southern Nuclear. The right-hand picture is a Plant Hatch located in Baxley, Georgia. It is, we have 311 megawatts of capacity there, and it is also operated by Southern Nuclear. Next slide, thank you very much. The upper left-hand slide shows the Wansley Combined Cycle Gas Plant. It is the one wholly owned generating facility for MEAG Power. We have 32 of our participants that get capacity out of this, and it is operated by NAES, located in the same property of the Wansley Coal Units. The right-hand slide is a picture of one of the hydro dams that is part of the Southeastern Power Administration Group, or again, SEPA, as we refer to it. The contract specifically is between the participants and SEPA. Our role in this operation is that we transmit the energy from the dams to the delivery points for each of our 49. SEPA capacity at this point is 398 megawatts. Next slide. This slide is a representation specifically of the ongoing debt service for generation that applies to College Park. It is laid out in the color scheme that denotes the various projects that make up our ongoing debt. Projects 1, 2, 3, and 4 were the early bond issuance things after MEAG was established. College Park is a member or has capacity in all four of those projects. I will direct your attention to the right-hand gray, and that starts somewhere around 2035, 2036. College Park is a member of the expansion at Vogel Three and Four, but they took their capacity and sold it for the first 20 years to JEA out of Jacksonville, Florida, and Power South, a consortium of co-ops and all that's over in Alabama. So for the gap that you're seeing in that graph, those years, that power is being used by JEA and Power South, but they're paying for that. And you can see when the power, when that 20-year contract is up, the debt service does go up as that time comes into effect. But this is the full debt service graph going out through 2061 as far as College Park goes.
Can you make a point of decline?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to point out, though, of course, that this is, it is declining over time, and that will result in lower wholesale bills as far as College Park goes. All right, this slide shows the energy mix for 2019. The left-hand pie chart is the system numbers as we generated energy in 2019, but the right-hand pie chart is College Park, excuse me, specifically based on their entitlement shares in the generating facilities. So for 2019, 76% of the energy that was delivered to College Park was from the nuclear facilities, 6% from hydro, and then you can see the other two percentages from those purchases in coal. Next slide, please. This slide depicts the comparison of emission-free energy delivery versus fossil delivery. And you can see on the right-hand side, College Park's emission-free numbers for 2019, 82% of the energy delivered to College Park was nuclear ore, hydro, and the remaining 18% came from the fossil units that you all have ownership in. This slide, excuse me, this slide shows from a capacity standpoint, for 2019, there was 69 megawatts of that capacity, that 88 megawatts of capacity that you all used to serve the native load, specifically to College Park, and that gave you 19 megawatts of excess that we were able to sell on your all's behalf through the Energy Authority, as I mentioned earlier, to the wholesale market. Next slide. This is a listing of some of the business and trading partners that we deal with. The Energy Authority, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Again, that is the wholesale trading partner that we co-founded with JEA out of Jacksonville and Santee Cooper out of South Carolina. There are two offices now, one in Jacksonville, Florida, the other one in Belvidere, Washington. And through that affiliation, the Energy Authority has done business basically with pretty much everyone in the continental United States in the lower 48. Federal and State Legislative Affairs, we have a group within MEAG whose responsibility is to monitor any legislation coming up, either federal or state, and has, that could have any impact on the electric sector. We work closely with the Georgia delegation, both at federal and state level, to monitor any legislation that would have an impact on our municipal systems. The American Public Power Association, or APPA, that is the umbrella organization nationally to represent, or that represents the more than 2,000 municipally-owned systems across the country. They're headquartered in Washington, DC, and our Federal and State Legislative Affairs Group works real closely with APPA folks to monitor all things on the federal side. We also have very active participation from our participants, and we have representation on their board of directors with Steve Renfro, who is the General Manager at Chris County Power. The fourth bullet, the Large Public Power Council, or LPPC, it is a subset of the APPA group that focuses on the generation side of things and monitors any potential legislation and the impact it might have. Our executive team is very much involved in all things with the LPPC group. The Georgia Mayor's Council for Public Power, that's the sponsoring group for our Mayor Summit, which we hold each November, and it is just a couple of weeks out. During that little get-together, we usually give a MEAG update, but then also give a preview of the legislation that we anticipate being brought up in not only state but federal, and the potential impact that it may have on the electric sector and consequently our 49 participants. The last three bullets are Economic Development Partners and Vocational Instructional Partners that we belong to. Obviously, the economic development is to do all we can to bring in business to our municipals and help to work to retain the already existing businesses. The Georgia Energy and Industrial Construction Consortium is an organization that works closely with our vocational technical schools to provide training for new folks coming into the electric utility industry, the energy industry, and have a good supply of trained, reliable workforce for the future. Next slide, please. Benefits of public power. Let me just, all four of them are really important, but let me just focus on the very last one there, and say that the focus of all of our public power folks is to enhance the quality of life for the communities that we serve. I can, I think I can say easily that all 49 members or participants of MEAG, that's their main focus, is to enhance the living, the quality of life within our participant communities, and that goes even all the way through APPA and the entire country. And I think that's my last slide.
Yeah, thank you, Stuart. And so now, everybody should have a little bit of understanding about MEAG Power and generation and transmission, and how it gets to our city through the substations, and the distribution side, of course, is ours. But this slide shows our expense breakdown, and it gives you an idea of what our expenses are as far as the cost of generating power. And you can see that majority of that, 83.5%, is what we pay MEAG Power and we pay Southeastern Power Administration for the cost of generating and transmitting power. And this pie chart is fairly common with all the utilities in Georgia. This is not an exaggeration. So in those dollars there, pretty much fixed. So when we do, we kind of try to do some budget cuts, we can't touch that. So we can only work on our operating expenses and other expenses, which is less than about 20% to operate the city, operate the utility. But I've set that up to get into our billing and our rates and what I call the power cost adjustment. And if you've gotten a bill this summer, you know that this number has gone up. We're utilizing the power cost adjustment for two reasons. Let me explain the PCA. We utilize that to reflect the change in generating and transmitting power to the city. There are many factors that can change the PCA, and they are not necessarily rate increases for MEAG. In this case, they are not. But in our case, there are two major factors that have recently caused the ramp-up of our PCA. First is, goes back to some credits we were receiving, the municipal trust fund credit. Back in their late 90s, we, the city set up a trust fund in case of electric deregulation. In case that happened, we had to compete with other power companies in the state to win loads and keep our own power loads. The regulation never happened. So we had all that money set aside, so we went through this credit system to give it back to our citizens through our power bills from MEAG. So over the next several years, we received these credits from MEAG Power until 2018, when the fund was depleted. It bled over into our 2019 budget. So that is one reason we had to ramp up our power cost adjustment, because we ran out of credits. And the second big item that we need to let everybody know about, and this was a city of Sandersville contract default. In 2006, they purchased excess power from us, the 15 megawatts, and pay on it for 11 years, at least everything, including the premium payments. They defaulted and stopped paying the portion, the premium payments. So we took them to court, and it went to trial in early March 2020. But however, the jury found the contract was invalid. They never properly enforced the contract to begin with, they're saying, even after paying on it for 11 years. So they stopped paying the premium payments, and they stopped paying for the 15-megawatt excess. Therefore, we got $15 million per year dumped into our laps. The contract, by the way, did have in there, if they defaulted, we would have to pick up the expense, and that was in MEAG's interest to protect the rest of participants from the expense. So now, we're waiting for court appeal to be scheduled. Until that time, we have an extra $5 million per year to pay MEAG Power. And this is the history of our power cost adjustments, and this goes back to August in 2010. The power cost adjustment with most utilities can change every month. It is a variable within the rate. So some can go up and down every month, some are fixed for a while. And in our case, in 2010, we changed that power cost adjustment in January in 2011 to a franchise fee, which was added to our bills, and this franchise fee, when you go straight to the general fund, is not part of our budget. Then we started ramping up the power cost adjustment in 2011 through 2015 because of some extra costs and environmental expense for some of our generating plants. We knew it was coming, so over time, we ramped up our power cost adjustment until January of 2016, when we determined that that PCA was fixed, it was not going to go back down. So we blended the PCA in our rate and zeroed it back out. So that's when we started ramping back up in May 2019 to make up for the trust fund that we lost. And then, of course, this year, when we got $5 million dumped on us, we had to rapidly ramp up the power cost adjustment, and we have two more adjustments in this month and then December of 2000 of this year, and we think that will be enough to make up for the extra costs. And what I've got on the far right two columns are where we are with the survey rank, that Georgia Public Service Commission provides a residential rate survey, and it ranks all the 94 power companies as far as their residential rate. And the ranking I have here, where one is the lowest and 94 will be the highest. You can see our winter rate has held pretty well. Our summer rate has actually done well over the years until this year, when we had to ramp up the PCA. And I won't get into more detail about that in a little bit. So of the $0.029 per kilowatt hour PCA, .008 is for the loss of credits, and .021 is for the recovery of the Sandersville default. If we win that case next year, which we probably win, the trial will be held, we can back off that .021 if we win it. And I'm going to kind of zoom in on the last few years. And I'm gonna kind of zoom in on the last few years on our residential rate survey. And this is the winter survey for a thousand kilowatt hours and where we rank of the of the ninety-four power companies, where one being the lowest, ninety-four being the highest. So our winter rate has held well up until this year. So in the last few years, we've been sixteen to eighteen to nineteen percent below average and ten, eleven percent below Georgia Power. But the summer rate's a little different. We, we've been below average a little bit for the last few years until this year. Now we're above average, seven point nine percent and five and a half percent above Georgia Power until we can back off the power cost adjustment. And just to review the rates again, these rates have not changed since January 2016. So the rates have not been increased. We just have ramped up the power cost adjustment, which is a variable within each rate. Winter rate is covered from November to April. We're just starting up the winter rate this month again. And it is a base charge of ten dollars. The first five hundred kilowatt hours is eight point eight cents per kilowatt hour. And anything over five hundred is seven point eight cents per kilowatt hour. The five hundred kilowatt hour kind of represents your appliances in your home, your lighting. Anything over that is your heating and cooling and your water heating. So in a winter rate, we go down mainly to to help compete with gas heating and to reward those customers that are fully electric for having electric heat. A footnote at each rate on the residential, the senior rate is the same, but it it does not include the ten dollar base charge. The summer rate's a little different. It's from May to October and over five hundred kilowatt hours, we go up. That is somewhat of a price signal in the in the summer. The power could be a little more expensive as far as the market rate. And usually the summer peaks are what sets our calls for next year on transmission charges and anything else. So we charge a little more in summer. And I had a goal in place before this extra cost hit us to reduce that over five hundred and it's still in place, but it's probably going to not take place till next year. Okay, I think that covers all the rates. Now, I didn't want to put this slide in before. It's talked about the billing. Our advanced metering infrastructure. This is a system we started installing in 2015. We we have it through a contract with Electric Cities of Georgia. Eight thousand two hundred sixty-seven electric meters and three thousand fifty-four water meters. Ninety-five percent of our electric meters can be remotely connected and disconnected. The other five percent are usually the commercial customers or that are too large to be disconnected by pulling the meter. They provide remote reading, billing and checking for current reads. We now can get fifteen minute interval data of power uses from our billing. They record momentary outages. If your power blinks at your house, we we can go back and see when that happened and also records sustaining outages, anything that lasts a longer period of time than a blink. The meters also are bi-directional and that is, that comes in handy when we have a solar customer that that generates more power than they use with their panels and they sell it back to us. It all provides power outage alerts. When the power goes out, we get an email from each meter. And that's also is for tampering alerts. If somebody pulls their own meter, we get an email and we'll investigate it. Another feature we are using for our water endpoints is it records or lets us know if if there are water leaks. If you have a water meter at your home separate and it shows continuous flow, we have contacted so far this summer eighty-five customers who have water leaks for them to fix that. So hopefully saving them more money. These are just some of the features of advanced metering infrastructure. The installation was a challenge, is is the case with all cities or all utilities that install this system. We got through it and it's working well for us now. So now we're going to get into some billing information and our customer service department and our director of finance and our customer service director, Althea Lord Bradley is going to do this. So Althea, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Hugh. Good evening, everyone. The primary, primary function of the customer service department is to generate the utility bills, which include power, water and sewer sanitation and stormwater charges. They also process payments. We prepare work orders for disconnections and reconnections and we also submit work orders to repair dysfunctional meters. And basically, we are here to service our utility customers' needs. As the saying goes, out with the old, in with the new. The city has decided to change the billing statement format to provide utility customers, which with much more detail on their bills. Okay, this slide just compares the current bill to the new bill layout as a visual. And with the two layouts side by side, you can see how much of a difference there is between the two. All right, what's new? The new bill provides, like I mentioned before, much more detail for each utility service. It includes a graph which shows your monthly energy usage trend. Thirteen months of worth of usage history on the graph is also represented. This gives customers the ability to compare their usage for the same period, however, however, in the prior year. Currently, we have a third party that prints out and mails out our utility bills. With the new billing format, the customer service staff will begin printing these bills in-house. And we do believe there is an advantage to printing in-house. One of those advantages would be that the bills will be mailed out from our local post office, which would allow the mail to arrive, I believe, in a more timely manner. We've received complaints about bills not arriving or arriving too late. So hopefully, hopefully, this will alleviate that issue. Our utility customers should start receiving the new bill layout towards the end of December. We were hoping for November. However, there were some minor changes that needed to be made. So we had to push the date back a little. With more detail, we expect there to be more questions. What are the charges on my bill? What do the charges represent? As I believe Hugh mentioned, the electric franchise fee, which is the cost of conducting, conducting business in the city of College Park. And again, these fees were are paid to the general fund and like most cities, municipalities throughout the state of Georgia, any electric power provider does pay a franchise fee to the city and that cost is normally passed off to the to the customer. So the next, the next item would be the block. You will notice on the statement, there are blocks listed under electric, water and sewer services. A block is a tiered prices system that charges customers a different rate once they surpass a certain level of usage under electric. And this is for just our residential customers I'm referring to here. With the with electric, the first block is capped at five hundred. And that, I mean, when I say the first block is capped at five hundred, I'm referring to the kilowatts, your usage. Anything over five hundred will be captured in the second block. And as you can see, there is a different price for the second block. So your first block is capped at five hundred and anything over that falls into your second block. Power cost adjustment. Power cost adjustment reflects the changes in cost of producing the electric power from our wholesale power suppliers. And our base charge is a distribution service charge. Next, we have sales tax. Sales tax is assessed at seven percent. And this is only assessed against your total electricity cost. The collections are remitted to the state of Georgia and the city only receives one percent of that back from the state of Georgia once we remit those funds to the state. Can you move to the second slide for a minute? I have to take you to the second slide. Now, some some customers will receive two pages, depending on how much information, data that we have to capture on your bill. You may receive one page, you may receive two. This utility customer would have received two pages because they have a lot of information that needed to be captured. And that's why the TSPLOS, which is the transportation special purpose local auction sales tax is captured on the second page. And that too is only assessed against your total electricity cost and that's three quarters of a percent. That too is remitted to the state of Georgia, state of Georgia Department of Revenue. And then we receive that the entire amount in back from the state of Georgia based on whatever the collection is. All right, so I'll take you through, I'll walk you through the water and sewer service. Now, under the water and sewer service, there is also a base charge. However, there is also a block charge. However, it's a little different from the the electric block. With the electric block having two blocks, the water and sewer actually has three blocks for residential customers. The first and second block are capped at four kilogallons. Anything over the eight kilogallons then is captured in the third block. And basically, so most customers normally don't, residential customers normally don't fall into the third block. If you're into the third block, you may have a leak. So you want to keep an eye out for that. But normally, you have a lot of our customers only fall into the first block. But we do have some customers that may fall into the second block. But it's capped at eight for, it's capped at four for the first and second block and anything over eight will then fall into the third block. Now, our water delivery is just the cost of delivering the product. Our water supply charge is the cost of providing the product. We actually purchase our water from East Point in Clayton County and that's how we are able to provide this service to our customers. Our, we also have the sewer consumption charge now and that includes the collection of the domestic wastewater. Your sewers, your sewer usage more than likely should match your water consumption. So if you have four blocks, I mean, excuse me, if you have four kilogallons in your first block, then you should have four kilogallons in your sewer consumption charge as well. So it should match unless, the only time it it may not match is is if you have an irrigation meter. That's totally separate. So unless you have an irrigation meter, your water consumption and your sewer consumption should match. Sewer treatment charge includes treatment and improvements to the sewer system. We actually, the city of Atlanta and Clayton County, excuse me, not Clayton County, but Fulton County treats the city's sewer system. And we pay for, we pay a fee to them as well. The next item is the refuse sanitation charge. It's just the fee of collecting garbage, which is collected twice a week for our utility customers. Next page. We believe communication is key. We ask that you please do not disregard the back of your bill. This is our way of communicating with our customers and providing with information that would and could perhaps be beneficial to you. With the new bill, we do have the ability to customize some messages to our customers. We have much more room to to have that ability to do that. So we ask that you look at the back of your bill when you receive it. Please don't disregard it because there may be important information for our utility customers on the back of the bill. Things as far as keeping our utility customers up to date on citywide events, on council meeting dates or special meeting dates, those may be on the back of your bill. So we ask that you please pay attention to the back of your bill as well. And I believe that is it for me. Questions and answers. Over to you, mayor.
Well, thank you very much. I have gotten a few questions and I don't, don't mute yourself, Ms. Flor Bradley, because the first question is going to be for you. What about businesses in terms of the new bills and what, what can they expect?
They should expect the same format. I just use the residential bill because that's the majority of our customers, but they should receive the same format. Their pricing system and their use system will be different, but that is available online on the city of College Park's website as far as their pricing system for each customer. So we have residential departments and our commercial customers. So everyone should receive an updated bill. There should be no difference in the format.
All right. Thank you. Oh, okay. Got another question about paying bills online. If your bill is over five hundred dollars, you have to pay it in increments. Are we going to be able to change that in the future?
We'll, we're still working on that. We're having a bit of issues, but that is something we're trying to increase. We will have an update on that. Once we get that finalized, we'll, we'll actually put that information out on your new bill. So you should be on the lookout for it. But we should know something soon. But right now, we're, we're having a bit of issues with increasing that threshold. So just be on, we're, we're working on that.
All right. Mr. Richardson, this question is for you. Is there any plan in the future to run power underground to prevent outages during bad weather?
Yeah, that's a good question. Our problem with a lot of this bit, whether or the trees and underground would would prevent some of that. We still have other issues. Lightning would, of course, ground and we have equipment failure, but we would take the tree part out. I think that'd have to be a gradual thing done over many years. It would take millions to put everything on the ground. Of course, all of our new construction is on the ground, but surely our goal is to finally get everything there. I think especially with the Six West expansion, all that would be converted underground. We do that.
All right. Next question for you. Have there been any discussions to run voice and data across the transmission lines? And that is way beyond my capabilities there. So how does that even work?
I don't think, Stuart can answer this, but I don't think it can be via transmission lines distribution. I'm a little bit familiar with a little bit of that, but Stuart, can you address transmission lines?
Well, I'm not aware of any effort that that's been made to allow that, but I'd be happy to follow up on it.
I do know there's an old metering system using the power line carrier. I think those are obsolete, but in the, in the good old days and the late nineties, there were some advanced meter systems that used power line carrier to communicate with. It went over the power lines. So it's similar what we're talking about.
All right. Those are all the questions that have been sent to me and I don't see any additional questions online. But if you do have a question, go ahead and raise your hand or put it in the chat box. All right. Okay, so we are having, I can answer this one. The question is about updating communications in regard to the restoration of power. And I think last week was a, an opportunity for us to to make some changes in that regard. And I know that all of the all of the folks who are involved in the communications when power goes out are, got together on Monday. And so we're coming up with a better plan about that because there, there is a better opportunity for us to engage and let people know when to expect power to return. So that is something that is on our radar as a city and we, and I think that you can look forward to having improved communications in that regard. Anyone else? And Mr. Hicks might be able to add a little bit more information to that.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, we have the capabilities and we will be using that soon. We'll be sending out text messages via email, push notification, across your text messages. So we have it and we will be using that real soon.
And that'll be through our Code Red system, correct?
Yes, ma'am, through Code Red.
Okay. So if you haven't signed up for Code Red, go to our website, collegeparkga.com. And if you scroll all the way down to the bottom of the homepage, you'll see an opportunity to sign up. You click on that link and put in your information. So that's going to be the primary way that we're going to be communicating information in that regard. But those of you who get those Code Red phone calls also know that if you've put in your email address, you also get emails that say the same thing. And you also get text messages as well. So we'll be utilizing that system more. So if you spread the word about that, we'll go ahead and make sure. And Mr. Walker has put the link in the chat box. And so we'll go ahead and make sure that that will be the method that we'll be communicating to folks with. So, all right. Any other questions? Let's see here. I don't see any others. Mr. Hicks, do you?
No, ma'am, I don't. And no one has raised their hand either.
Okay. Well, great. So I just want to thank everyone for coming because I think, and everyone for all their hard work to get this presentation together. Thank you to Mr. Jones, Mr. Richardson, Ms. Flor Bradley, and Councilman Clay for providing feedback as well, because I think this information is really important to get out there to all of our stakeholders. And it will be available. I believe it'll be available on our YouTube channel as well, so you can watch it. You can send people to take a look if they didn't participate this evening. But we appreciate it and hope the rest of you have a great evening. Thanks so much.
And Ms. Moss, I'll be in touch soon.